No, Limari, I cannot hear you.
I'm here, Tony. This is Donna.
Perfect. Yeah, I saw your number pop up right now.
This is Limari. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, perfect, because I couldn't hear anything.
I know. And sometimes it's a little funky.
Yeah, I had to log out and log back in.
Hello?
Hello?
Is that Donna?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Elliott, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Who is this?
This is Fernando.
Yes, Fernando, okay.
We got Tony on the line as well, and is that Jeannie? Jeannie and Joseph and Limari, it looks like.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Maria.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So, Tony, do you know if we were going to have a full commission tonight?
The only one I have not heard back from is Ramos. Lulu just texted me she's getting on right now, I believe. Ramos is the only one who hasn't answered anything to me.
Okay.
Point.
So, we'll leave it up to Jeannie if she wants to proceed or see if Mr. Ramos will join the call. It looks like we have a quorum either way.
Yeah, and Lulu just texted me she's turning on her laptop now, so maybe just give her a minute or two.
Okay.
There we go. I think Lulu's getting on now. Yeah, it looks like we have everyone but Commissioner Ramos. I might have to try to find another number for him or something.
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order.
Okay.
I need approval of the minutes of the last meeting of May 4th.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I second that.
And just a quick FYI, I did have a correction on... As I told you guys, I amended it to note that Limari is there. There's also misspelling on Lulu's last name. I guess they autocorrected. But that's been fixed on the public one. That's just an FYI. Look, God, he's always with two Rs, but that has been fixed. But go ahead and do a quick roll call. Commissioner Ramos absent. Commissioner Elliott.
Present.
Commissioner Garisales.
Yes.
Commissioner La...
Present.
And Commissioner Tillotson.
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, 4:01 absent on the minutes, thank you.
Okay, we move on to public comment, announcements, unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the Planning Commission at this time on items on the agenda or on any other items of interest to the public within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits any member of the Commission from commenting or taking action on matters not on the agenda. Comment is limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public?
At this time, no. No one that's... Humberto, if you're on, or anyone on the streaming side on Facebook. Give a quick second, please.
Okay.
Any questions? Any audience? All right, it looks like we have nothing. I think we can go.
Okay, then we'll move to the public hearing. Proposed land acquisition by Reef Sunset Unified School District pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 20151.2 and Government Code, Section 65402. Staff report.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. And I want to make this brief. It's a pretty straightforward item. We received a letter from the school district, from Dr. East, letting us know that they are planning to purchase two parcels that are north of the Tamarack Elementary along Kern Street. And the Public Resources Code, as Commissioner Tillotson mentioned, and the government code both require us to assess the proposed purchase just to make sure that it conforms to our general plan and zoning ordinance and basically to ensure that the community is given an opportunity to provide comment on the proposed purchase. And so, in your packet, there is a report that I prepared which shows the locations of the proposed parcels that will be purchased and the zoning and the land use for those parcels. In my analysis and discussion, I also discuss what parts of the general plan relate to school sites and which ones specifically are applicable to these particular parcels and to this particular proposed project. If you read the letter from Dr. East, he doesn't give any specifics as to how the proposed parcels are going to be used, whether to expand the elementary school or for another purpose, like more parking or better access to Tamarack Elementary, or maybe additional offices, administrative offices. They do own parcels... Well, they own a seven-acre parcel directly across the street on Hanford from Tamarack, and they haven't developed that. But from my understanding, and this is not for sure, this is not for certain, I think that the school district wants to keep their options open, but one of the ideas being proposed is to use that as an exit for the parking lot to alleviate some of the congestion and traffic that builds up in the mornings and in the afternoons when people are dropping off and picking up their kids. As you know, because Hanford isn't fully developed, there is a lot of blockages and bottlenecks that occur in that particular area, and this might be a good way to try to solve that problem. Again, they haven't promised anything or even decided on what they're going to do with the parcels if they move forward with the acquisition, but it is a possibility. Yeah, I mean, this is not something that... This report is not something that would have SEQA applicable to it. And generally speaking, the school district takes care of its own environmental analysis for projects and things like that. But this report itself is not subject to SEQA, as I mentioned in the report. And essentially, my recommendation is that it does conform to... The proposed purchase does conform to our zoning, or excuse me, to our general plan because the two parcels are going to be expanding an existing school site, not adding a new school site. And it's in an area where there's existing infrastructure. It's not outside of the boundaries of growth. And it's within a residential neighborhood where they're planning to expand the school footprint. So, yeah, generally speaking, we would recommend that the Planning Commission transmit this report to the school district for their review and reference. There's no... Just by transmitting the report, we're not necessarily approving the project. I mean, they'd be able to move forward with it regardless. This part of the law just gives us the opportunity to give some feedback as to whether it conforms to our general plan and potentially consult with the school district if necessary. But we think that everything is fine with this proposed purchase. Are there any questions before we open the public hearing?
Dr. East is no longer with the school district, and we have a new superintendent, or quickly, pretty soon, I don't know whether he's on board yet or not, but he's been hired. Does that make any difference with the letter?
No, my understanding was that he's going to be with the district until the end of the month or the middle of the month. But I could be wrong about that.
Oh, June? Oh, okay, okay. I do know that the other one, the new one, I guess, is close to being on board. He's been hired.
Yep, July 1st, I think, is the start date.
Okay, very good.
Okay, then I guess we open it up to a public hearing. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission about this?
I don't see any public on our end, but let's check on the streaming side, so one second. Humberto, any comments, could you ask? He says no. No comments.
Okay, I guess we'll close the public hearing. Open for discussion, Commissioners?
I think it's fine. I don't have any problem at all with it.
I will think it's fine. No problem, no question.
Lulu?
I don't have a problem with it. Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. So, at this point, what are we going to do with this, Fernando?
So, we would take a vote... It'd basically be a motion to transmit the report to the school district.
Okay, do I have a motion to transmit this report to the school district?
Yes, I want them to approve. Transmit the... What was it?
Report to the...
The report.
To the Reef Sunset School District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Donna, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Garisales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRios?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillotson?
Yes.
All right, 4:01 absent.
Okay.
Thank you.
New business? We have none. Old business? We have none. Economic Development Oversight Committee comments.
Yeah, so we don't have a ton to report, except that we did... I'm not sure if, when we had our last Planning Commission meeting, we reported on the emergency loan program for small businesses in Avonale. We have implemented that program, and we're happy to report that the funds have nearly been expended. We have about $2,000 remaining with a couple of applications in the pipeline. But essentially, the council had authorized $50,000 to be loaned to businesses as forgivable loans, which most, if not all, of the loans that we've issued thus far would qualify for loan forgiveness once we verify the use of the funds. So, we were able to help about 19 different businesses so far, if I have that count right, Tony.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, and each of them requested a maximum amount of $3,000. And for the most part, they are using the funds for things such as rent. A lot of them are past due on their rent, or two or three months behind on their rent because of either closures or lack of business, et cetera. They're also using it for utilities, inventory, cleaning supplies, just a lot of different things that obviously are needed at businesses these days. So, yeah, that's a bright spot. We're also moving forward with the community center. They're installing the basketball hoops inside the building today and tomorrow. They're installing the basketball hoops inside the building today and tomorrow. The asphalt parking lot is gonna be fully installed, I believe, by the end of next week. They're pouring sidewalk around the building and doing an ADA ramp off of Hydrill Road. But yeah, that parking lot should be complete within a couple of weeks. And we are just kind of gearing up for a few of our other projects that we've been awarded. I don't know if we updated the Planning Commission on a grant that we received from the state through SB2 that is going to allow us to make all our permitting processes electronic, because right now, it's pretty much all paper-based. And so, we received, we were awarded about $70,000 from the state to implement that. And then another $90,000 to undertake an infrastructure financing district feasibility study, which will allow us to look at what our options are for funding infrastructure projects to continue to facilitate housing development within the city. So, yeah, some really exciting things. We mentioned already the park that we got the grant for behind the boxing club, you know, the ATP Crosswalks project. So, we've got a pretty busy year lined up, and we're waiting for more funds for the community center. So, we're, yeah, we've got a lot on our plates, but we're happy to keep going. And City Hall, actually, just an update that we received from Melissa. We are gonna be opening the doors to City Hall on an appointment basis, starting next Monday. City staff is gonna be, is not gonna be returning fully to the office yet for the foreseeable future. Eventually, we'll start gradually coming back to a normal schedule. Right now, we're staggering our schedules in each department. But we are gonna be letting people into City Hall on an appointment basis more regularly as of next week. And yeah, I think that's all I have. Tony, do you have anything?
Let's see, business loans. I don't think so. That's about it. It's been what's keeping me busy, the loans.
Okay.
Has the town opened up to businesses? Are they all able to open up and do business?
Yes.
Yes, for the most part. We don't have a lot of businesses that fall, or I would say maybe any businesses that fall within the stage four that the governor has identified as kind of the large gathering businesses, I think, except for churches. I think religious gatherings are still not allowed, or large gatherings. But yeah, for the most part, businesses are allowed to open. Restaurants can start taking in dine-in customers as long as they're maintaining, you know, six feet between each table and sanitizing and wearing masks. We are recommending and we're encouraging businesses to require masks for their customers, but you know, that's typically hard to enforce, but that is something that we're asking businesses to do.
Are we concerned about what's happening out at the prison in relation to our town?
The last update from the, from the police department, from Rusty, was that they are isolating pretty well over there. I mean, the outbreak really has affected a lot of people at Avonale State Prison. But the only, when you separate the numbers at the prison from the rest of the community, our numbers are still pretty low, so there's not a ton of concern yet at this point.
Fernando, are we doing enough testing in Avonale proper to really know?
Yeah, that's a good point. That's something I brought up to Melissa last week about, she did pose the question to the county administrator about, you know, what can we do to get testing? I mean, all, the clinics in town all have testing capabilities. However, it's not as widespread as in Hanford, where you can go over to the government center and just get a test. But if anybody is showing symptoms or anything like that, they can go to a local clinic and get tested, but it's not as widespread as possibly it should be.
Okay.
Well, so you know, every employee at Avonale State Prison, as of tomorrow, will be tested. We've been testing since Wednesday. It was mandatory. And they are also testing all of the inmates. So, you may, you know, it may look like the numbers are skewed, but when you test is when you, you know, you find out for sure whether you're positive or negative.
Right. Right?
So...
Yep.
I got tested on Friday.
Good. Very good.
I would like to comment. I think it's a good idea if, you know, more resources are brought to the community so that they are able to get tested out here in the community, because a lot of individuals, a lot of residents, you know, they might not have a vehicle to go out all the way to Hanford to get tested. And I heard, I don't know if this changed, but I heard that when everything was starting, that people who did feel a little sick, they would get told that they had to go out, out of town to get tested. So, I'm not sure if that changed or not, but yeah, I think it'd be a really good idea to get the community tested.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's true. I think initially, when everything started and testing, test kits were so scarce. You know, even the big hospitals didn't have any. They were being told that they had to either not get tested and just, you know, quarantine themselves. Or our clinics definitely didn't have any tests, but I think that's changed now where they do have that ability. It's not the tests that give you the results in like five minutes. You do have to wait a few days for the results, from my understanding. But we are looking at, I know Melissa has asked the county for what it would take to get resources from the state, because the county is getting resources from the state for their testing center to get some of that directed out to Avonale.
Awesome.
Okay, any other comments from the Planning Commissioners?
I did have a question. Last time we approved our trailer ordinance to send to the city council. Did the city council approve the ordinance?
They will be considering the item at this next council meeting on June 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
When do you think we will start having face-to-face meetings again?
Oh, that's a good question. I can, that's something I can ask at our management staff meeting tomorrow. There hasn't been any indication that that's gonna, the Zoom meetings are gonna change anytime soon. So, hopefully, I'll have an update for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions? I guess we're adjourned.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening. Stay safe.
Fernando, do I need to come over and sign anything?
Thanks.
Nope, nope, there's no resolutions to sign. We're good. Thanks, Jeannie.
Okay. All right, you guys have a good week.
Thank you. You too. Stay safe.
Be careful out there, Jeannie.
What's that?
Careful, Jeannie.
Oh, yeah, I am. Thanks, Donna.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye night.